Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is Monday, August the 25th, and we're just gonna call our workshop session to order. Uh, first, first item up. I'll get my councilman to straighten up up here. Um, discussion regarding city boards and renewals.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was placed on the workshop since this evening, so we can take a look at who is up for reappointment this year. There's three positions that we'll need to talk about. And so for LEC, Charlie is up for reappointment. He is a council appointment, so we'll either have to, you don't have to make a motion tonight, it's just for discussion. Uh, we'll either have to reappoint him or choose another council member to appoint. Uh, same thing on the golf course board. Zach Morris was our council appointment. He's no longer on council, so now we'll have to select someone new. And then for the airport board, Robert now has a paid position with the city. His term is technically not up until 2029, but that's up for your determination to see if he's okay to continue sitting in a seat even on that board, or if you would prefer that we remove him off of the board and replace him with somebody else.
Is there anything, if I was on the airport board, was it director versus what?
Not specifically for that question. Any questions?
Any questions?
On the airport board, we do have some people that are interested in that.
Correct.
And so then maybe we go qualifications to make sure that all that, there's, have lessons, et cetera, on the case we're doing.
Uh, Robert and Luvi, our parks assistant, have been reviewing those. They're reviewing that, uh, their qualifications, and then they will take it to the airport board for recommendation.
Uh, Charlie? Charlie, did you want to, want to try to be reappointed for EDC or just?
I'm, I'm kind of hard to, yeah.
Did you want to see reappointment for EDC?
If you would like me to continue my position on EDC, if you wasn't happy, continue on or?
Okay, that is, we're not voting tonight, we're just for future.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'll be more than happy to. If right now, today, if that is a position that is open, do you would like me to continue, if you weren't happy, continue on?
Okay.
I would volunteer for the golf course board.
May I?
I volunteer for the golf course board, if you're interested. Unless somebody else wants to.
Are we gonna make a motion or?
There will be no motion on that side. It will be placed on the September agenda.
Okay.
You should have a special.
Well, we have to see it. There's a couple of positions for openings, I believe.
There's one, so there's one for reappointment and one position where she is being asked to step back as she's not made a meeting in two years. Uh, she has also agreed with us as well that she hasn't been able to be there, so we need somebody who would be able to make those meetings.
And are they aware, uh, some of these, the apply for lots of positions? Are they aware, yet is that seasonal? And during the work, hour, day, and things like that?
Not that I'm aware. I haven't specifically reached out to any of them and explained anything. All of our boards do have descriptions on our city website, so I would think that if they were applying, they would review those, but I can't guarantee that.
Well, that, clearly on that reapplying, uh, or not reapplying, I'm sorry. Is that, uh, is that in writing to you, or is that just a verbal?
Most of them are in writing, not every single one of them.
Okay, and you mean every single one of them in writing?
I do not. They would've just had to fill out an application if they were planning on reappointing. So no application services in the right.
Now, are we looking at the 8th or 22nd to them?
I kind of need some direction on that. As you know, the EDC board at this time doesn't have a full forum, so we either can't have a September meeting, or I can bump up the motion for EDC appointments to September 8th, or I can keep it at the September 22nd meeting as their terms don't expire to the end of September. Just with the direction.
I'm good with that.
Or all of them are just, just the city?
And why, why do you say, do you say?
Oh, well, because. Definitely because.
Just, just quick question.
I was gonna say, the reason I was thinking that because a lot, like, the boards don't wanna give the boards time to meet because the boards usually give a recommendation for who they'd like to join the board.
Some of them don't necessarily meet prior to our September meeting. For example, the airport board doesn't meet. They meet quarterly, so they'll meet in October. Uh, so that's why Robert and Luvi have been reviewing and they have talked with some of the members on the board, but it won't be a full forum. So they're recommending a reappointment of certain people, uh, but there won't be a formal meeting for this.
I have a question, Park and Ray. I was at the meeting, and those that are current are being asked to be reappointed, and I think the parks were agreeing with that.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything, those are four openings that are available now, is that correct?
Correct, and those four openings all hold a seat for an organization within the city. So, uh, Roberta represents Spring Hope, and we have spoken with the Spring Hope board. They have chosen to reappoint her. She put her application back in. Uh, Shane Jones is for LISC. He was chosen for reappointment as well, so he applied. Uh, Tasha Bates is for Little League. She has reappeared. No, I'm sorry, Tasha Bates is for the Chamber of Commerce, and Mariah Thari is for Little League, and she has.
And there are at-large members that would be chosen next year?
Correct, there are, uh, four at-large seats on that board, and they are up for reappointment next September meeting.
So are we deciding all these, or are we just, those? I think we're still, we should see.
It's, uh, it's kind of about the direction that.
It's clear.
So.
I'll, I'll even move aside from confusion, all that. Um, if we're gonna decide what's inside, um, if we have recommendations, we move forward. Don't have recommendations, so I don't need to move forward. Um, on EDC, my opinion is this council is not supported. The EDC has a conference meeting, so I'm not exactly sure what we're saying. And that's the reason that these three members are being questioned and have stepped down because this council has not supported what the EDC has requested. So I'm not sure. How do you want to move forward?
And what was that request that the council didn't support?
Uh, since March, they wanted to have a meeting.
And they hadn't had a joint meeting in 27 years.
Well, they had one before that, and it was very rebuttal.
Well, there are applications, uh, in place right now for the.
There are plenty of applications, but there were also people that were on the board that stepped down.
Right.
Because this council refused to work with me.
I don't think it's the council that didn't refuse to work with the, with the EDC at all. I think the council wanted it, but the EDC, it was a matter of timing and through the budgets and everything else, and.
And the council did not have a budget to bring to this council because they did not have it, correct?
The EDC could've come to any council meeting at any time and been, and requested to be on the agenda for a council meeting.
You are correct about that. And EDC requested help from this council. Which was refused? Well, not.
I don't think it was refused.
Well, we were supposed to have a joint meeting on the 20th, that day. I think our budget stepped up. Wait, any other council members that you guys had? So, the way I saw it, the EDC didn't want to. What happened to our budget meeting on the 20th? What happened to the joint meeting on the 20th? I was not here to lead the pack for it, because I was in Boston with my son. Apparently, some decision was made apparently that we were working at a joint meeting on the 20th. So what, what transpired?
I think what they, they paused that. I think what transpired on that, to my understanding, that, uh, that they would come to a council meeting and we would discuss it at a council meeting, and Lu, uh, not having another meeting.
The previous meeting in council was that we were gonna meet on the 20th.
Uh, sure.
And that was my retweeting before I went out of town. And so when I went out of town, I fully expected. When I came back, in the 20th, everybody had a joint session. And when I got back, we had a joint session, or we were supposed to have a joint session on 20th. We didn't. Do you have a comment? I'm trying to be more personal.
And Mayor and Council, I'm excited on the workshop agenda to discuss the Land Passes Color School. A while back, city staff has approached by group individuals that aren't interested in preserving the heritage of the color school, and they are attending tonight to speak about, um, major plans for the school working at the city. So Russell and Tasha. Anyone with their good lights coming up?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Tasha Lewis, and I'm part of the Land Passes Color School LLC nonprofit. Um, we have three of our five members with us here today to have higher, uh, range of support. Um, first, I wanted to thank Jack for the opportunity to speak with me this evening, and also just to the great introduction of all of us. Um, I'm a contracts and project management professional for the state and for the federal government. Um, I have Dr. Wood, a lawyer here. He's an attorney specializing in real estate, church, and nonprofit law. Um, Russell's next to me. Um, a lot of people in Land Passes know him. He's a local entrepreneur, multiple businesses, specializing in corporate and real estate, um, across the state of Texas. Um, who we don't have here today, Sean Porter, who is also a local entrepreneur. He's also in real estate and has a, um, logistics business and also some public events locally. And Coy Porter, he is a, uh, leader in the Texas nonprofit, Texas Parks and Wildlife, um, and specializes in preserving historical sites. Um, so he's out here with us today. Um, I wanted to give Russell a chance to do some opening remarks. He's the main reason why we're here today and we embark on this journey.
All right, y'all, let's get this attention right. So pretty much while we were here, uh, I don't know how many years ago, but my grandmother was on board trying to get some stuff done at the color school. And when she passed away, on her bed, she asked me to keep it going. So I have, uh, arranged a team of people that I just, I mean, we got the lawyer, we have the project manager. We have, we have everything in place to actually get something done. So that's why I reached out, was to grab people from outside the community that could help me handle to make sure that we have the right people in place. So I'm gonna be short soon, and we'll talk all day. I'm gonna step over and then Tasha can explain.
Thank you. Um, so the LCS LLC, we do have an admission statement. Um, it is that we exist to preserve, protect, and promote Black history in the city of Land Passes through the restoration and revitalization of not only a building in Passes Color School, um, we'd also like to move that number with the New Hope Baptist Church. We seek to build a city that honors the past while creating opportunities for the future through education, culture, and community empowerment with these locations. Um, and then I have Dr. Woods, who has some words to say as well.
Greetings to this distinguished committee, uh, council. Uh, we're delighted to be here. What a grand opportunity for us to come and serve. Uh, and even though we say that, uh, this is, uh, we're not part of the community, we really are. Uh, because wherever we are, our objective should be to work together to make this not only a better city, but a better state and a better country. We can do that by working together. One of the concerns about, uh, being in a position to take over these properties would be that we would have to be compliant with nonprofit requirements. That's a specialty of mine, uh, that we sought to make that happen. We, uh, found. Uh, and even if there was a condition requirement of three-year, uh, experience and nonprofit standing, we have that option as well already in place. Uh, we are requesting not only the colored school, but adjacent to it is a church. We felt, uh, it was a very likely, uh, combination, hand in glove. Throughout the history of the African-American in America, the two most prized, uh, valued, uh, I guess you could say, claims that they had in the community was to be educated in school and to be able to devote their time, uh, to, uh, their, uh, Lord and Savior. And so we just felt the blend there. They both have served as a bedrock for African-American communities throughout the state and throughout the country. And so we felt it was just a very, very natural, uh, request for both of them. Uh, we also believe that it's important that we be legally, uh, compliant, uh, with all requirements and also in a position to maintain their status. And so we feel that Russell's done a tremendous job of putting together a group, uh, that can not only, uh, prepare uh, for this, uh, project, but can maintain it with integrity, with legitimacy, uh, and to address the real purpose of it, uh, to cultivate the preservation of what, what in this community, and sure, has stood out and produced, uh, through educational means, uh, something that this community can be proud of. And Tasha is gonna come and explain to you how we feel that by, uh, taking over and, uh, developing this project, it's gonna be of value, uh, to this community. Not a threat to, to the historic beauty of the community as it is, but just a add-to, because that's what it is, as well. It's so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so for the, the Passes Color School and for the New Hope Baptist Church, we do have a strategic proposal and a vision plan that I can either, um, leave here or hand out to you guys that gets more into detail if you didn't wanna take up too much of your time. Um, but essentially, both of them would be more of a museum, educational resource center, um, cultural heritage site, and also meet places where there can be events held in the future to also help sustain its nonprofit status and help keep it and make sure that the land is, um, being able to use into perpetuity, hopefully. Um, what we're requesting from you all today is the formal support and collaboration, um, for both prop, for both properties to make them a unified cultural and historical project. We also are requesting the transfer of property rights for both the church and the color school to be included in the preservation and for the vision. Um, also, we would need, of course, your assistance in navigating zoning utilities, restoration requirements, um, to support a timely redevelopment. We would also need the endorsement and visibility to support and strengthen all the public engagement and funding opportunities that may be available. So with this proposal, we think this is a turning point for the city of Land Passes. By reclaiming and restoring these two pivotal sites, we can build a powerful legacy of education, community pride, and cultural celebration. With both of these properties together, we can serve, they can serve as living monuments to the past and hopeful foundations for the future. Um, we have a plan that we'd like to begin as soon as this year, so we would just request and hope that you guys have the same interest, um, to go ahead and get this process started. Um, so we would definitely be looking forward, um, to speak on this as soon as you all are available to discuss. Um, we appreciate your time, consideration, and partnership. Um, and just letting you know where I can leave our proposal, and I'd be glad to do it.
Any questions?
Being as anonymous for discussion and direction, uh, very helpful for what you have said. I'm looking forward to reading the proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you already formed your 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and could you, could you keep the name? Because I wanted to make a note of the title of your 501(c)(3) or your project.
The Land Passes Color School LLC.
Yeah, well, we'll try to use it for the issues. That's what we talk and we cultural educate.
It's also listed at LCS LLC, yeah, it's very common.
And we have plans to educate people all in a politically correct way. We need it, in Land Passes, we don't have that, and we need it.
So y'all are going to vote for properties? So we can make a deal on both properties, is it, this morning? Done for you, or?
No, it's not a, no, no. But we would like to have them, because they just stay. And I believe the other board has been talking to us about working together with what they had, so.
Maybe that's why I was wondering, because I think it's been a few years.
Yes, that's true. Yeah. We met, uh, at the school, and we kind of ran a podcast and how we can help each other. If they need us, we, I mean, we're all here to work together, that's.
And when you talk about Mr. Miller, when you're talking about the Land Passes, oh, no, no, not here, but I mean, the Land Passes Historical Commission. Is that who you're talking about?
No, well, so Coy is with the Historic Commission, our other president, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
And he has all the information, the details. If he did something similar here, and he was skee and Lancaster, so. He knows all the protocols, all the things that you do, and he just pulled the information, I think, and he offered the license as well.
If, uh, this sounds very, well, well, well. In the event you have to find out where the LLC um, installed it, what would happen to the property? What's your thought on that?
Uh, in the event it was one, uh, wound up, uh, the, whatever remained would be donated, uh, as, uh, as, as nonprofit assets to another nonprofit.
And typically with the use of municipal property, because state law does allow for the transfer of property um, without any financial exchange, as long as the, um, property is being used for educational purposes. If it ceases to be used for educational, public purposes, the ownership would typically revert back to the original.
Given the evidence, I think the LLC is downline.
Um, ultimately, the way I understand it, yes, it could revert back.
I'm not, I'm pretty sure, is it gonna be handed out to us, or has it?
I can hand it to you, uh, Mr. Julie, or just?
Okay.
Yeah, if you find out, like, if we're moving, you know, and I'll.
Right, that'd be good, thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item number four, discussion of letter objecting to a proposed encore LCRA transmission line route J1, of potentially impact to WCID's flood retardation structure, three, four, six, and eight.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I was approached by some representatives of the Water Control Improvement District regarding some concerns that they have with, uh, LCRA and encore's proposed route J1 for the large transition line. That, um, there's, I believe, three potential routes, and this would be the northernmost route for that proposed line. It does cut across specifically, um, one of the retardation structures, and it comes pretty close to two others. And I do have a representative from WCID here tonight, Mr. John Walker, if you guys have more specific questions. But they have asked, and I'm not sure, John, did the county pass?
Excuse me.
Did the county pass their letter of this morning?
Yes, yes.
So Land Passes County has been asked to, um, submit a letter in opposition of this proposed route as well. And WCID is just asking if the city has to consider this thing.
Can I, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Doesn't this route also connect to the, is it the G1 or the G5 route that's on the south part? That's really close to town, too? So it would be like in opposition to both of those, I believe?
I might be a question to understand what you're saying, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Walker. Say again.
So, uh, from what I'm understanding, because I've talked to some people on, on the Belt Route, and then there's, there's a second route to, or a second connection, because there's a route that comes through the water control dams, and then it connects to another one. I'm thinking it's, it's either G1 or G5. It's really close to south of town.
In the middle, basically, or through this process from Belton to San Angelo, there are three routes, J1, J2, and J3, which are the longest of the routes that basically just kind of cross that area. J1 is the only one that affects the lakes and affects basically Land Passes County. The other two, as best I can tell, are both in Burnet County.
Right, and then, but I think this, this J1 goes into a G5 that is.
There's a G in different little sections out there on both ends, actually. Uh, it appears to me, just looking at the map, that from Belton to San Angelo, the middle route is the one that is the most direct route. But, uh, we don't know which one they're gonna choose. We're just concerned here because it does cross that one lake, and then it goes real close to three and four, and, or six and three, and four's a little further off. It goes between those, and, uh, the, the TCEQ won't allow lasting within a half a mile of these dams. And all of these dams have been re, um, classified is the word, high to high hazard, not meaning that the dams are in jeopardy. They're still very sound and doing their function, but because of the development downstream.
The high danger.
Should there be a failure, there's a lot more potential for devastation. And as we all know, this last big race though we had, all of those dams worked perfectly, or Land Passes, I'm sorry. Land Passes probably would've had some flooding again, more than what we ended up with. And, uh, so we're just real concerned about what they're doing there. I don't know. Okay. Any other questions?
No questions?
But I can, no, I don't think I can bring it up on my phone. I was gonna say, I could bring it up on my phone, the whole map, and you could see what that, I should, we should've printed that out as well, I'm sorry. Okay.
Is there anything we can do to help this one?
Well, well, that would be nice.
Yeah, I think, because I'm pretty sure, because it even cuts, like, where this is connecting, it connects to another one that's very close to town, just out of town. So I'm very much thinking they need to get further away from town.
So does that, does that sound like an all ready on, where we get a letter out?
So there's a letter to vote on later in your packet.
Okay.
That's already drafted, ready to go.
There's a typo.
Is there? We'll fix it.
It's a video, and it says something.
Okay, okay.
And Mike has been. So that, fucker or something.
Thank you.
And number, item number five, discussion regarding any item regarding, we call the regular agenda. And there is none, and so we get a motion to adjourn workshop. Go to.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will call on the board for a regular.
That's great. Dear, and your father, we thank you. This is a great place to be tonight. Appreciate our community, appreciate our citizens, appreciate our elected officials. We just ask that you be with us so we can make some good decisions, spread some good information around, and betterment your community, have some good things in mind. We ask that you be with us, and thank you, forgive us. We ask that you be with us, thank you, forgive us for our sins, and as always, Jesus might we pray, amen.
Please join us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible.
And this evening, before we get started, we have, uh, one very special thing on our agenda. And, uh. Miss Corville, that came in back in March, April? When did you come in?
I started in August.
No, yeah, no. I have a brain freeze, I'm sorry. There's, there has been a lot that has gone on during that time. And I think, Ms. Council, we want to honor you today and to say thank you for everything that you've done. And, uh, I want the council to come down, represent with the heat of the city. And you guys come down. And afterwards, after we do this, we're going to invite all of you guys to come up. And we'll have a ten minute recess and we'll have some cupcakes.
I have, I told Katie not to eat cupcakes.
You don't listen. I'm not infol- but you.
You're short, you gotta get the throttle.
And there's cupcakes with best part right here, thank you.
Don't forget, okay.
Well, it's burgers, burgers, yeah, we're going to read the paper up there.
Counsel on matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. For possible posting and discussion by council on future agendas the city may, council may not deliver a. On item presented underneath agenda item. And I don't think we have any. And 1.2, citizens comment and citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included on the agenda may do so at this time, but we have none. Consent agenda, 2.1, second reading of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance on city land assets. Chapter seventy-eight, traffic and vehicles part two, division four, section seventy-eight. That's one twenty-one, establishing a speed limit for portions of old corner road. Locating, located in the city's jurisdiction, providing for enforcement and applicable fines and punishment. Second reading of an ordinance for a request to allow for specific use per that property legally described as block one. Lots one through five of Anker, Division, commonly known as Mill Street, Landpasses, Texas, Landpasses County. 2.3, discussion of possible action regarding approval amendments to the regular meeting held on August eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to separate out people in three as I was, you and Dennis, we obviously wanted to be so that I can abstain from that.
Okay.
I moved approved consent agenda 2.1 and 2.2.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
3.0?
I'm sorry. Well, 2.3.
Three.
3.4.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see.
That would go with 3.0. Boards of department reports, fire department, most reports. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You're going to come up on this one?
Is it valid?
It's now. I mean, I. It's make or I.
The marker, the marker, I'm trying to put it, it's left. Is it, that's all right. Push it back. I get what? Okay.
Don't forget that you know what.
That's right.
Only if you're secure, it's checking.
Believe me, yes.
I know, sixty seconds, I'm back up.
How fair, guys.
You need to make sure over hour. I can hear this long.
Yeah, something must have called this.
We'll improvise. Thanks, Gary. Oh, look, there he is. All right, this is, uh, fire department annual report, this is going to go from July, uh, August first to July thirty-first. So just to give you a bar and overview, we have a full-time staff of fifteen, twelve operations, three administration, those administrations, with the fire chief, assistant fire chief, and fire marshal. We have eight part-time staff that we utilize in place of the full-time staff if they take off or if we want to add additional personnel. Our schedule goes from forty-eight ninety-six, uh, with one captain, one driver, and two firefighters, could be three shifts. Uh, we run out of one fire station, uh, with an administration office, and the volunteer fire department is also housed with us. Uh, our apparatus includes two engines, one ladder truck, a squad slash brush truck. Uh, one chief vehicle, the assistant chief vehicle, the fire marshal vehicle, and a support or utility vehicle that we. An operations division, we respond to, to fires, structured fires, vehicle fires, dumpster fires, if it's on fire, we respond to it. Uh, EMS calls, which is the biggest percent of our calls. Uh, injured persons, motor vehicle accidents, swift water emergencies, and flood emergencies, which we've had a lot of in the, this year. Uh, we also respond to gas leaks, carbon dioxide, smoke detectors, fuel spills. A good intent call, that's everything that's not included that I'm usually at. If, if they don't know who to call, they call down the one, they call fire. Uh, we also provide mutual aid assistance to Landpasses County and the surrounding cities, summer's federal. Uh, out of fire marshal's office, he is in charge of the annual fire inspections of all the businesses in town, commercial, uh, businesses. Uh, he does all the fire investigations, not only in the city, but also in the county. Uh, he's in charge of all public, uh, education programs, that's, uh, he goes to the nursing homes, assists in living, does fire programs for those folks. Uh, fire extinguisher classes, he schedules those, uh, we do those for businesses, um, and, and those school fire safety programs. He's in charge of scheduling and making sure all those get done in the month of October. Uh, from August first to July thirty-first, we ran a total of fifteen hundred and seventy-six calls. Twelve hundred and thirty-one of those were EMS, uh, calls or motor vehicle collisions, three hundred, three hundred and forty-five were fires. We had two hundred and ninety-five calls, which is almost ninety percent of overlapping calls, that means that while they were on one call, another call came in. Uh, you can see here that the geography breakdown, uh, our busiest side of town is going to be the southeast side. Uh, and then to the southwest, and then northwest, and northeast. Uh, in Landpasses County, we ran forty-five calls, uh, in Burnet County, we ran three, and we ran five in other, probably, there's probably Copperstove on mutual aid calls with them. Fire marshal also works with the fire marshal in Copperstove, and they assist each other at the meeting. That's just the pie chart, uh, felt worn, just all your, the EMS calls, as you can see, the majority of our calls are EMS calls. These are county calls, um. This, as you see, that about twenty-six and a half percent is fire calls, and we go out and counting, a lot of times it's for fires, uh, because they need all the help they can get. They also come to the city when we need help. So training and professional development, uh, I have listed here all of the classes, um, that we've sent guys to this year. You know, we have to continue to train and get better, and everything we do has a certification attached to it. It's just the way the state designed it. Uh, so currently, we have three attending driver operator class. We, uh, had one that received, has incident commander certification, uh, fire inspector certification. Uh, two of them obtained fire marshal certification. Uh, we had one attend the fire chief's conference in San Antonio, uh, fire marshal, two of them attended the fire marshal's conference in Tarrant County. Uh, three of them attended the bigger aggression training in Round Rock. Uh, two attended incident company operations in San Marcos, uh, we had one go to the fire executive management training in Huntsville. Uh, we had one obtain a state certified CPR instructor. Uh, we have three members that attended the company office symposium in Marble Falls. And additionally, we logged two hun- two thousand nineteen hours of additional training on top of all of that. Uh, this year, one, you know, our major incident was the July sliding events. Um, during that time, we provided mutual aid support, uh, to the county of Landpasses, we also, uh, went to San Saba County. We received mutual aid, uh, from Killeen Fire Department, Fort Hood Fire Department, Tiffany's, and the Texas Task Force. Texas Task Force and Tiffany's is made up of departments across the state, and they send individuals, uh, where they need to go. And we had several of those come into town, uh, during those events. Uh, this year, we were able to complete the repairs needed to bring the ladder truck to operational standards. Uh, hopefully, this will give us three to five years of dependable service, with hopes to have a replacement ordered and delivered within that time period. Uh, we were also able to purchase a full set of battery oper- battery operated extrication tools. That will serve as a, another set as we need it, uh, those are for CARBEX. Um, and this year, uh, as we all know, Chief Joe Adams retired with twenty-three plus years of service. Challenges, uh, what we face is recruitment and retention, uh, due to regional pay disparities. Um, with what we talked about earlier in the budget meeting, that's going to help us tremendously with that. Our apparatus, we have a ladder that's, uh, over twenty years old, our squad is over twenty years old. Um, two pieces of equipment that are vital to our operation. Um, our facilities, we need some station upgrades, uh, as we start to grow, as the city grows, we're going to have to increase our staffing. And we're going to have to do some upgrades to the station to, to, you know, to, for that staffing. Um, we've also got some safety improvements that we will work on in the near future. Training, we, we have continued need for specialized rescue and leadership training, we will continue to train. Goals for twenty twenty-five, or next, uh, budget year, uh, implement a structured pay scale to improve retention and recruitment. Uh, I'd like to seek funding for a swift water rescue, hotel rescue raft, um, and specialized training to address risk, address regional flood risk. As we've seen in the, the last month, um, there's a big need for it. And I'm going to find ways to seek funding for those. Uh, continue community risk reduction programs in schools and neighborhoods, um, they seem to be working well. Um, we'd like to replace safety apparatus and upgrade firefighting equipment. And I'd like to expand training partnerships with surrounding departments, um, we, we utilize the volunteer departments. And I'd like to create a, a program to where we can train together. And also reach out to Copperstove and Burnet, because those are all too close as paid departments, and I'd like to get them on board with, with some, uh, training.
Mr. Dex, in regards to the breakdown that you had on, uh, incident responses to different parts of the city, is there a breakdown within each? Or is like, do you respond to one area for a certain type of incident, more so than another?
So I do not have that breakdown, but I can.
I, I'd be curious just to see what that breakdown is just, I don't know, for my personal.
Absolutely.
Curiosity, like, are we, why are we thirty-five percent in one particular part of the area, uh, versus the rest of the town? Like, what, what's causing that? Is there something that we can do as a city, um, that would possibly help in any of that?
Um, I can tell you, one of those is we have a nursing home.
Okay.
Uh, in one of those parts that, that increases our calling.
Okay. And that's not, there's not a, it is what it is.
A breakdown in fires and EMS.
I, I'd be, I'd be curious just to see what.
I can get that one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think y'all.
Thank you.
Four point one, discussion of possible action regarding the first reading of the ordinance, amending Landpasses code ordinance regarding zoning regulation pertaining to smoke tobacco shops.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I spoke with J.C., our city attorney. And she directed me to put this back on the agenda in its original form. She let me know that the planning and zoning commission doesn't have the ability to modify ordinances. They can only approve or deny in its current form. They chose to deny the two thousand feet. Now it comes to you to either affirm, deny, or requalifications at this time.
I'm still, uh, I'm a little wanting to keep off key, as I said several times, uh, the two thousand feet, I mean. I mean, either way, just modify it since off key, having from, I said, that might have pushed chicken there, two ninety to the mic. I mean, that's my, my older life.
I don't disagree with that, but under our current ordinance, is the business allowed?
Is the business allowed?
Yeah, like, do they meet all criteria in order to do?
I think, are you asking, like, where, now with this ordinance, where in town could a bake shop exist?
Yes, and that's my question, like, under the current ordinance. If we vote against this, we don't want to rank.
We'll get a bump.
Are we going against ourselves? Are we going against our own ordinance?
We don't currently have an ordinance yet.
We don't currently have one.
Correct.
Okay.
We have one for alcohol, we do not have one for smoke or bake shops.
Okay.
I would like to add with the two thousand feet, that does very much limit what can go on Ki Avenue. Because it's two thousand feet of a hospital, a church, a school, daycare, playground. because it's two thousand feet of a hospital, a church, a school, daycare, playgrounds, everything. Not that there's probably a loophole somewhere, I haven't fully looked at it math, but it does very much limit what can go on Key Avenue or busy parts of town.
Well, two thousand feet, it's like from the Baptist church, all the bushes changing, so it's all, the whole town.
Pretty substantial.
So what were the current bake shops? What are the, what ordinance are they?
We didn't have any ordinance since they just were required to get a specific use permit for their zoning.
And if this ordinance is in effect, they are grandfathered?
They are grandfathered in. Unless they stop business for a duration of ninety days, then they would fall into this ordinance again.
So this ordinance would be recommending, or would be anything that's located within the two thousand feet? Is that correct?
Yes.
That's what we, we'll be in there?
Yes.
And I, I agree that with some who feel that that's an extensive, like, space distance. I think it's too much, but that's something that we can talk about as well.
I ask for some direction on that simply because, as you stated, two thousand feet from the Baptist church is to bushes, which would also be to the other area of town, which would cover all of Key Avenue. So we would-
That's just one church, there's no next church there. I said, it's impossible to build a half two thousand feet for any bake shop.
That would extend in any direction, that is correct.
It's two thousand feet door to door.
And that would extend off of Key Avenue or?
If, it's going to be door to door from wherever the church is. And the daycare right now, western, it would be two thousand feet from that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so my recommendation would be three hundred feet from any school, hospital, whatever is on there. And then plus, in addition, nothing on key. That would be my recommendation.
I see that, is that the-
That's not what I, that's not what I know.
You can make a motion.
Make a motion.
You can make a motion to-
I would like to make a motion to say that no bake shops within three hundred feet of a school, hospital, or daycare, and also nothing on Key Avenue.
I would second that.
Any discussion?
The, I'm sorry, just a clarification. So the two thousand?
Two thousand feet.
Just apply Key Avenue three hundred feet and add not on Key Avenue. Is what he would put in it?
Three hundred.
Three hundred feet to match the liver and not on Key Avenue. This would-
Yes.
Yes.
So they could go out on one ninety?
As long as they're on-
Five eighty west or five eighty east?
As long as they're on three hundred feet within a daycare or church or a school.
Or a hospital.
Or a hospital.
From border. Does that include the county?
It is not our ordinance, it just says hospital, but I can make it more specific.
See, if you direct what you have.
Healthcare facility.
Yeah.
Healthcare.
Healthcare, but it's a policy.
Do you want to amend that to the motion for that?
Clarify that in your-
Hold on, I amend that motion and change it to healthcare facility.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion on that?
I just need clarification, I'm sorry, so we're talking.
So, the, the motion on the table is three hundred feet from any school, daycare, or healthcare facility, or church, and none on Key Avenue. That was amended by Edward and sent in by Eric.
And any discussion? Are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Thank you.
Four point two, discussion possible action regarding the Landpasses County Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center this for the year twenty-five, twenty-six. Pleasure.
Mayor and Council, we recall that a few meetings ago, we had taken a look at Melissa's proposed chamber budget. At that time, we had some discussion about adjusting hot funding, particularly since we were reallocating Christmas on Greek funds to a more appropriate line item within the electric division. That opens up some marketing opportunities, expanded marketing opportunities for the Chamber of Commerce with hot funds, which is really what those funds should be utilized for. So Melissa's new budget, it kind of reflects that updated amount for additional marketing funds.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So back on July twenty-eighth, I presented my budget, and the agreement was asked to wait and come back after the city was able to work more on their budget. At the same time, the request was saying to get quotes from multiple platforms, which would allow me to use funding for an adequate marketing campaign. That information has been added to my explanation document, as you will see in the packet. We also made some addendums to the agreement, which will be the next item on the agenda. However, I just wanted to repeat with you, understanding that this is something that I've never had the opportunity to quote in the form that it's being done now. In your explanation, you'll notice under the advertising section that I have kind of outlined a campaign in some way that includes print, travel writing, digital and social media, marketing agencies, videography, photography, website and SEO development, regional newspapers, visitor and hunter guides, surrounding community visitor centers and chambers. A couple of those items I'm currently doing under the budget that I had last year, which was about fifty-two hundred dollars. You'll notice that this does go up to eighteen thousand. After getting some quotes, I realized that is extremely low still. However, I'm determined to come up with a lot of different options that will include all of these items in these mediums. So that being said, I don't have specific quotes for every single line item on here. I have received back from social media marketing agencies, along with some digital and some print. But the, as far as the travel writers and some other print publications such as, no, just the travel writers basically, and some of the surrounding community visitors that can do some testimony on some logs. Everything else will cost a certain amount based on our need and what we determine falls within the hot funding opportunity. Are there any questions? Everything else is the same on that budget.
I move to approve the Landpasses County Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center FY twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Okay. Any discussion?
So this eighteen thousand is, that's what was up in there before?
Correct. Last year was fifty-two fifty. This year, I brought it down to thirty-eight fifty, I believe. I don't have the prior numbers with me. But then I was asked to go out and get some tourism marketing quotes that include the whole campaign. I've never done a campaign before. We actually currently are on tourTexas.com, which is a digital website with, that generates leads. I also, last year, did the brochure, and then also was able to do some surrounding community marketing. This will be an entirely different campaign where I'll go to places like San Antonio, Dallas, Austin, Waco, to try to get that tourism in to our community.
So you're helping to market this more expanded this option?
That is correct, yes.
You can reach more people.
Yeah, and also to, so my budget, being able to do that brochure last year, or, sorry, in the last budget, actually, they all just went out about a month ago. Those digo to the twelve travel centers. So that was the, probably the biggest reach that we've had, and that was, that was really great. And so we keep up with those travel centers, and I plan on getting some data from them as well. But that was just the first part of a outreach marketing campaign. This will allow us to do a lot more.
They'll have a much more robust marketing program with this allocation.
Digital level.
Yes, sir.
Did you notice on it that they can be figured out for eighteen thousand isn't quite enough? What should that number look like?
Well, it's, it's relative because you get these marketing agencies and these print agencies that don't know who they're dealing with, basically, and they're used to dealing with some of the bigger cities. I mean, I just got a quote for fifty-four thousand dollars. And that was just for the social media portion of the campaign. Now we all realize that that's completely out of the question. And I believe that I can take some components from all of these quotes and actually do a little bit of the work myself, but then also try to co-op and do some of the work. As a matter of fact, and I, people don't really like to hear this, but I've aligned with some other regional chambers and visitor centers, and for the two eighty-one corridor, we're talking about co-op-ing with some of the marketing and advertising, just so we can kind of showcase some of the things that we have that they don't have. For instance, say, you know, we don't have as much lodging as some of the other ones do. However, we would have an event that maybe we could share itineraries, and then maybe they spend one night here, spend one night in Burnet. So we just need to get creative in how we bring people and keep them here for longer than thirty minutes. My goal is three hours. I would like three days. But we got to start small.
Baby steps.
Baby steps, yes, sir.
How, how do you do that without sending all of our tourists to Burnet with, like, hot funds?
I'm not sending them to Burnet. They are, they're actually spending their money here. I'm trying to get them here for a longer period of time with Airbnbs, maxing out our lodging with events, which we're already kind of doing. So if we have a rodeo, if we have a spring hoe or anything like that, we already book out the hotels. So, I mean, we just have fifty-five rooms in both of the big hotels, and then I think it's about thirty-two in the country end, and those are mainly for business people, our construction workers. So, I mean, it's, we're going to have to get creative, but with this new tourism campaign, we're creating experiences for these people to bring their families. And we are going to have to tap into the Airbnb market a little bit more. But we also have a lot of venues opening up for weddings, and different events and things of that nature. And so we partner with a lot of those people as well. And they are always looking for more unique places to stay. And again, until we end up at a hotel in here, that we're going to have to get creative. But they do spend a lot of sales tax dollars, and that's really, really important as well.
Do you kind of have an idea if you've got one person that comes here for heads and beds and has an hideout on town of eating, what that tax dollar leave behind looks like?
Now, I'm traveling, oh, shit. No, yes, there are some analytics and some data on that. And now with this tourTexas.com, we have a whole entire dashboard where it generates the lead, and then it also shows, it breaks down into dining and retail shopping, and just visits to certain attractions. And so that's really what I want to do, is I want to spend more time creating those itineraries and those experiences for people. But it is going to be with the inception of more lodging and then also more events that bring people here for multiple days. It's the multiple day events that require them to stay, you know, they're drinking, they're wanting to, they're traveling from afar, and they want to stay. So, yes, we'll also have to get creative on some of the events that we offer. I mean, we are focusing on a lot of the attractions and building out those entertainment opportunities and districts within our community. I mean, we've got a lot of hidden gems. I'm just going to tell a quick little story. So I've never been to Fredericksburg. Today's my birthday, so we went last weekend. And I was really expecting the worst. I mean, I, everybody's telling me it's so touristy, you're, everything's so expensive, yada, yada, yada. And I said, well, I don't have the money to go up and down Main Street and spend all tastings and, and buy things. I thought a little bit here and there, I want to contribute to their sales tax. However, what we did was, we wanted to do something different. So we got online and looked at their chamber, looked at their visitor center. It's what all travelers, travelers do, tourism, or tourists do. And we came across a sandwich truck. And so it's this app where you do it all on your phone, and you pay a fee. I don't know how the breakout goes, but the whole point of it was that we did something completely different than most people do in Fredericksburg. It was very educational. It got us to a lot of historical attractions, and it took like, it was a walking tour. And it took like three to four hours, and it was amazing. And I learned so much about Fredericksburg, and I definitely want to bring that here. I mean, it's something I wanted to bring here, and more of a social level, but for historic, for historical purposes, by far, Landpasses has a lot of things to, to showcase. So that's just one example of something that I was able to take from another community. I know you were talking about sending people to other communities, but we can learn a lot from our partners. And, and not, and not purge that information, and not steal that information, but share it and figure out how it works in our community. And that's really been my goal since I got here. I remember when I got into you, and, and they were like, well, you know, what's your first thing on your agenda? Like, what do you really want to focus on? And I didn't really know, but I said, we've got an awesome square, and we really need to start working on that. Now, it's taking a little while, but we're making, we're taking baby steps. And this past year was like the first year that we've really been able to embrace tourism. And it's been with the addition and support of a lot of different developers, business owners, and citizens who say we want to get back to the glory. So we don't need to build a lot, we just probably just need to uncover a lot in Landpasses.
Does Chipper do anything, sports programs, baseball? I know we've done some studies in the past for, you know, tournaments that come to town. How many people would they bring to town?
Mayor, they, they don't. I know other cities, a lot of those tournaments around their city, which is why I'm so excited Bailey's here. However, I do feel that that is a huge benefit to hot funding. I mean, it just is. The problem is facilities, infrastructure, and you just have to look at all those. You have to build that out. That, that is something you do have to do.
They have a law firm on that.
Yeah. Now, I mean, we, we need those baseball tournaments, maybe, but, I mean, we're able to kind of do it with weddings and stuff too now. So these weddings are getting huge, and everybody wants to come to the country. We have the small town for the weddings, so we really need to embrace that as well. Then you're back to your last question. The, the average daily spend for a tourist, for a single tourist is somewhere around seventy-eight dollars, although that varies, like, if they're in town for an event, if they're in town for something different. And then obviously, it increases exponentially with multiple members of their party or multiple night stays. Generally, in rural areas, starts around seventy-eight dollars a day per person.
Okay.
And that's in the study, I apologize, I didn't have that hot funding note, but yeah, that's in the hot funding packet, I believe.
Go ahead.
Any other questions?
Tell me you need to vote.
Yes. Do we have a motion to say? Do we have a motion, sir?
The question is approved, we do go to the contract, to the agreement.
Somewhere good. Okay, thank you.
So this is four point three?
Correct.
Four point, yeah. Discussion possible action regarding the agreement of the Landpasses County Chamber of Commerce for the visitor center agreement with the city of Landpasses. FY twenty-five, twenty-six.
So Mayor and Council, and I can defer back, but I don't think there's any need to. So the two addendums that we made to the contract were that we had moved it to twice a year, and it needs to go back to every quarter, I believe, is that correct?
Correct. I think all requires quarterly reporting for the residence.
I think that's the only change that we updated.
That should be.
Yeah, it wasn't with the budget, because I think that varies depending on, okay. Yeah, so that was it, just going back to the quarterly reporting?
All right, I move to approve the Landpasses County Chamber of Commerce Tourism and Visitor Center Agreement with the city of Landpasses, FY twenty-five, twenty-six.
Sir. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Four point four and four point five in your packet are switched. So Bailey's going to come up and talk about the hours of operation, but in your packet, that is four point five.
Four point five, so discussion possible action regarding the first reading of the ordinance amending chapter fifty-four, article three, vision three, part six. chapter fifty-four, article three, vision three, part section fifty-fourth dash one seventy, regulations concerning use, adding a new provision regarding riding and handling of horses in city parks.
Mayor, Mayor, Proton Council, this is an ordinance addition that the Parks and Recreation Department is wishing to add after some recent incidences at some of our parks to include individuals who are tying the horses up on playgrounds while children are playing, trotting their horses on soccer fields, softball fields, and baseball fields. So the ordinance we are looking to add on to would be for unintended use of equine on areas such as playgrounds, in heavily crowded areas, and in areas such as soccer fields, baseball fields, softball fields, or near the skate park in and around the pools. And then leaving horses unattended and not tied up has become another issue. And this will not apply to the area indirectly around the rodeo, and this will not apply to the hike and bike and ride trail.
It will not apply to the bike trail?
So the hike and bike and ride trail technically is allowed for equine use as well.
Okay.
I was under, I was under the impression that the hike and bike trail was just a hike and bike trail that they had issues with the horses, because the horses are erratic.
So that's not what I've been informed of, if it's something other than that that I've been misinformed?
Thank you.
That's another discussion.
We have some heated topics.
Yes, absolutely.
Because they did not want the horses on a hike and bike trail.
No, it's minor standing as well.
So the ordinance doesn't specifically state the trail? I think it does specifically state the rodeo arena. And so it would be worse over unintended use. And so if it does state the, state the trail, that can get removed as an exemption, but I don't think it, it's the ordinance itself states the, states the hike and bike trail.
If we have designated areas that are hike and bike and designated areas that are horse riding, is that something that we do put in there?
I mean, I would, I would.
So we do, in the Parks and Recreation Senior Operating that I've been working on, have identified some areas where equine use is acceptable and permissible. And then also trying to exclude those very specific areas such as crowded playgrounds, very extremely busy parking lots, soccer fields, baseball fields, softball fields. And so that is something that I'm in the process.
I'm specifically thinking about hiking bike trails through the woods out there at Five Eighty, or coming in Silver Track. You know, you started a bike going at fifteen miles an hour and all of a sudden they would come up on a horse. That might be a bit of an issue.
Yes, sir. And so we can include that potentially as an exclusion there. So that.
I don't know if we've designated those trails specifically, it's just, I think, I think those trails are designated. I think it's, it's only, and horses are allowed, the rest of the, is that something that we need to put?
I'm sure there's.
I mean, I've seen these signs for hiking bikes, but I don't know that it says no horses.
That'd be, that'd be something in our contractual agreement with the guys around the trails.
I think that's what it is. Yeah, I think that's what that is. I'm pretty sure that it's covered, no horses on hike and bike trails.
So would we need to include that as a piece?
There is currently a sign out there that says no horses and no cars on hike and bike trail. I can go double check that tomorrow. However, for this ordinance, it just specifically says that on designated varial paths where such a pedestrian riding is permitted, so it doesn't call out the hike and bike trail. So we can still pass this ordinance and go verify where these signs are and then allow horses.
Then we can go back and change particular paths.
Absolutely.
To the council.
In terms of this.
I'm not sure that we're all experts on that, but we can bring in experts that tells that horses don't necessarily be on this particular path.
Yes, sir.
In terms of this, we don't need to specify that, but we can look at other orders to see if that needs to be.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna restrict the ability of someone riding a horse to go through the woods and enjoy their ride on that horse. I also don't want to hear from Chief Davis that they had a response to a horse bicycle accident at Five Eighty Park. Yeah, I heard you. I think as a city park, what should riders should be able to use the land and set up the trails and visuals.
That are specific to them. Yep. So this ordinance doesn't necessarily address that, it specifically addresses. Please don't take your horse on the side of the hill just for a park.
Correct. This states that we're asking you not to take your horse somewhere unattended. That they're not allowed to be.
And if the signage says the no horses on the trail, then this shouldn't be in it.
Yes. So if the sign is there, this ordinance would cover that already. Again, this is more geared towards the playgrounds, crowded, crowded areas.
So are you gonna put signs up in every place you don't want horses or houses in turn?
So we've identified certain areas that are of concern to include the playground and workout area at Five Eighty Complex, as well as the two unfenced soccer fields. Torrential damage has occurred at both of those locations, and so we are intending to put some signage that says no horses in those areas, and we're gonna continue to see areas of major concern. And as this come along, we could add signage.
So I move to approve the first reading of the code ordinances for the City of Land Passes, chapter fifty-four, parts, section fifty-four through one sixty-seven, section fifty-four through one seventy-three.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, we'll go back to four point four, discussion of possible action regarding the first reading of the ordinance amended in chapter fifty-four, article three, vision three, parks, section fifty-four dash one sixty-seven, hours of operation, temporary closure by the city in section fifty-four dash one seventy-three, permissible parks facility permits and condition for rentals and designated park facilities.
Mayor, Mayor, Proton Council, section fifty-four dash one sixty-seven and section fifty-four dash one seventy-three, the hours of operation for the parks facilities completely with one another in these ordinances, and we're looking to unify those into one time hours of operation. So fifty-four dash one seventy-three currently states the hours of operation are eight AM to midnight, while fifty-four dash one sixty-seven states six AM till ten PM. We are looking to move all of our hours of operation in these two ordinances to six AM to seven PM. This is simply just to maintain and accommodate all of our ordinances.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is in regards to a specific use?
This would not apply to any permitted event.
Okay.
Committed events for parks and recreation typically have a one AM cutoff unless they specifically ask otherwise.
Okay. I didn't want to restrain that.
Yes, sir. It is mentioned in the ordinance that I'm permitted actually to follow these hours.
Do we have a motion?
Now, make a motion to approve the first reading of amendments to the code ordinances for the City of Land Passes, chapter fifty-four, parts, section fifty-four dash one sixty-seven, section fifty-four dash one seventy-three. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four point six, discussion of possible action regarding hot fund requests in the Mountain fifty-five hundred dollars for Land Passes Spring, no questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This was provided to me by Tricia Seed on the spring ho board. And they were approved back in May for seven thousand five hundred dollars in our hot funds balance. And they have brought their receipts to us for reimbursement. She was supposed to be here, but I didn't see her.
I move to reimburse Land Passes Spring Festival in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars from hot funds.
Second. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion of possible action regarding the first reading of the ordinance amended in chapter fifty, section eighty, that is free, of the code of ordinance of the City of Land Passes, Texas, adopting a cross connection control program as part of the city's building regulations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What, did you remember back in June, excuse me, I would use here in Nasty, we discussed bringing a VPO LLC backflow management to assist with their backflow device testing program? As we looked into the ordinance, everything stated in there was referring to the building official for responsibility and authority for decision-making for backflow and cross connection. We do not currently have a building official, so we'd like to have that changed to a director or handler, his or her, does he need for any responsibility, approvals, or repairs regarding backflow protection and cross connection?
I'd like to, Marshall, to approve the first reading on that. The code of ordinance is for the City of Land Passes, chapter eighteen, fifteen, eighteen, dash.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And four point eight, I think we have some discrepancies on that one, and at this time, we'll jump over that one, kick that one back to another council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Go to four point nine, discussion and consideration of possible action authorizing the city manager to issue letter of objection to the proposed transmission line, route J one.
Mayor and Council, if you'll follow to the item that we discussed in workshop this evening, would authorize the city manager to submit a letter to Onward and Elserey objecting to route J one and further proposed transmission line.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city to issue the letter of objection to the proposed transmission line, route J one.
Second. Consider. And, any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll make a motion to.
Most of them.
Second.
All right, let's go on.